Board of Education regular meeting at 7:00 AM. Sarah, beginning to you, kind of a roll call please.
Mr. Burden, Mrs. Deck.
Here.
Mrs. Laun, here. Mr. Zanah.
Here.
Mr. Monson. Mrs. Blazin.
Here.
Mr. Kuzik.
Here.
And form has been established. Uh, just for the record, I am aware of Board Member Monson and Board Member Burden. I'm not being here tonight. Both have work obligations and uh, rental travel. So please stand.
The United States of America, in two great colonies, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
All right, can you do the next step?
Sure.
Oh, this is.
Mission of North School District 80 is a burning educational excellence and a true endeavor.
Thank you. Celebration of success time. Does anybody like to take that off?
We'd like to welcome our new Director of Special Education, Mr. Peter Masters. Welcome.
Welcome. Okay, congratulations to you.
And also uh, share that uh, North School District was awarded the Coronavirus Urgent Remediation Emergency Fund After-School Programs Grant through the Illinois State Board of Education. Think uh, Mrs. Kuzik will be sharing more information about that, right?
So speaking of Mrs. Kuzik, I'll jump in to my right. She's in the Superintendent Chair for the first time, so I would like to congratulate her on that again. Again, the board is really looking forward to you in the house, so congratulations. Anyone else? All right, would you offer that? Moving on to our action. I ask the Board to consider approval of the agenda as presented or potentially modified. Discussion? I ask for motion to approve the agenda as it is presented.
Motion.
Right. Maria Lu, roll call please, sir.
Mrs. Laun.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Blazin.
Yes.
Mrs. Deck.
Yes.
Curious. We gotta like to recognize our visitors tonight and for being here. Uh, no correspondence to report. Do we have any public participation? Will you check that if you don't mind? Is anyone here? Alan? No, okay. No emails, no?
I did not.
Letter mail, is it postal? For your books, Mr. Norwich, dated July 5th this year, requesting the name and email address of at least certified staff, and close teachers, administrators, nurses, counselors, et cetera, who have announced their retirement for any date or year in the future. Please also indicate the year they plan to retire. That'll be posted on our website for usual. Presentation. Not have a presentation this month. Moving on to administrative reports, Superintendent Mrs. Kuzik.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for the invitation. As part of my um, report tonight, um, I do wanna add, just let the board governors know that with my transition plan, I am requesting a meeting via email. I'll send you some information about what we need, pledge to meet one-on-one, to talk about your goals for the Board and how I can help us to meet those goals. Uh, wanted to also announce, um, we've mentioned it a few times, but National Layout Out's coming up soon. Um, August 2nd in North Park, 5:30 to 8:30. I was uh, with the group today, we did the layout at North Park, finalized the planning for National Layout Out. This is a community event, bringing the community out to celebrate relationships and celebrate our fleece and pride of our events. So um, we'll, we'll be blasting that out again. It's a free event, a lot of fun stuff planned this evening, so fleece and plan a little from your families over to the park. Uh, 5:30 to 8:30. In August, we will have a tentative budget for 2223. Dr. Schilling will be here. He has been working with uh, Kim, Kimberly, uh, Community Board on the budget for next year, um, and will be having a presentation about that at the August group. Also in the August Board Meeting, we'll be inviting all of our new staff um, to attend at 6:30 as we started last year, to celebrate them. So Board Members can come a little early next uh, next month and celebrate our new staff that we're gonna introduce them and ready for the new year. Uh, Senator Markwick announced um, some money that he has set aside, the state has set aside for schools, and I'm sure you're aware of this, just happened earlier this month. Um, and he is earmarking $50,000 for North School District 80 to be used on buildings, um, could be used for uh, chillers, for air, for ventilation, or for school safety. I did a job to his office to find out um, how soon we can start getting that and using that, and uh, spoke with Alex, his outreach director, she'll be getting back to me. As you recall, we also had in town some money line items with Senator Markwick a few years ago, so just following up on that. See if we can continue. He was in the building last year as a principal of the day at Giles and programmed through the Illinois Principals Association that Mr. Bielke had arranged, um, so we do wanna just keep our communication and go talk to him about that. But uh, we'll have to discuss the $50,000 for North School District 80 and our priorities on using that. As um, Dr. Rebiola mentioned, Dr. Rebiola mentioned, he did uh, receive information that we um, were awarded the Cures Grant. Um, that was that big long grant that you just mentioned. It is great, not just yours. This is a $200,000 grant um, for the next two years, and then money is earmarked for after-school programs. So we will continue working with North Park District on our after-school programs and our offerings. I just met with um, Anne Marie uh, from the park yesterday on um, starting to build plans together, and there is a park, North Park District meeting meeting Thursday this week. So we will continue having those conversations. Really excited about this. We previously talked about taking that money for the after-school programs out of, out of ESSER, so that will now allow us to use ESSER for something else. Really excited. All right, thanks Dr. Rebiola, Rebiola for working on the um, application that we put in. There is another grant that we're meeting on next week for preschool infrastructure that we'll be looking at as well, which is right up anywhere you're looking at. It's about $10 million dollars, that's reality data. We're gonna throw our, throw our hat in the race and see if we can get something from that as well. As you recall, on the strategic plan for the district, one of our exit items is to pursue grants. So this is the second one that now we've been uh, awarded, awarded, and we're gonna continue to get whatever we can and continue to apply for. Uh, summer projects are moving along well. The um, projects at Giles, the media center, the principal's office. Unfortunately, we have found out that furniture for both of those products will not be until October, um, just with the, it's a long thing to pick in right now. Blue lunchroom, uh, we've removed the lunchroom and they are, today I believe they were starting to um, paint the ceilings, which is just added about 18 inches into the lunchroom, makes it really look nice down there. Uh, the, the health sex standards is an area that we've kinda talked about a few times of what we need to now start to zero in on what we want to do in North School District 80 with the new sex standards. On June 14th, the Illinois adopted the National Sex Standards. As the Board made a call, you were given a copy of those National Sex Standards, if anyone would like another copy or would like to see them, yeah, please let us know and we'll send those out to you. Um, next month, as a discussion item, I will do a presentation about the National Sex Standards, so that everyone can see a comparison of what the standards are and what we do now. Um, and then we will have to make a decision, you will have to make a decision as Board on how you'd like to proceed with the National Sex Standards for Illinois's sex standards now. You have a couple of options of, you can opt out of some of the structure, uh, we can have that, we can go ahead and uh, cover them, and then parents can opt out if they'd like. So there's a bunch of different levels, but today I just wanna let you know next month we'll be discussing those people. And I will do a presentation on that, so you can understand exactly. You have, we've been given a copy of them previously. Uh, today you are looking at uh, purving policy update 109 on consent agenda. Uh, that is mostly part of a five-year review that is being done to look at um, little things in language. There isn't really anything standing out here, but next month I will make sure that I go through each of those policies, um, and write it for you if you have any questions. Most of the policies, 99% of them, are just a footnote change or a slight little wording change that still creates a difficult, um, a difficulty or we'll discuss them. Uh, the last thing I wanted to speak with you about is, as you recall, the state of the, oh, sorry, Cook County, uh, is putting off when taxes are due. This, again, this year. They did that once already last year, and I think it was at October, we asked the Board to pass a resolution to borrow money from our working cash fund and move it to our ed fund in order to cover the time period when the taxes weren't being paid. Please keep in mind that we do receive Illinois money from Illinois, however, most of our funds are, is, are low. So this year, they're looking at extending that out a little further, and we wouldn't actually start getting tax dollars until December or January. That poses a, a, a level, a different level of a problem for us now. Will we, will look um, again, at passing a resolution to borrow money from working cash into the ed fund. However, and we have to keep a, a really close eye on this, and I will update you on this in the next few months, we may get to a point where we don't have enough money in working cash. And in that case, we are not going, we're gonna have to go out for a loan. Um, and if you've heard, um, Patrick Villa spoke about, you know, getting affordable loans for school districts, however, it still will be a loan, still will have a percent of interest on it. Um, there's a couple of different ways we can look at it, so we're, we're just keeping an eye on our balances right now, but if we don't start receiving tax dollars until December, January, we are gonna have to, um, we'll, we'll do a resolution to move money from working cash, but then we're gonna have to um, take a loan until that money starts available. We can talk, Dr. Schilling, as I mentioned, will be at the meeting next month. He can speak on that as well, if you have any additional questions. We can put that in action on this, let's say I just wanted to put it on your radar that, that was something we need to do or don't. That is not because we have mismanaged money, that is not because we have not budgeted adequately, that is simply because the tax dollars that we use to fund the district will be coming in. So um, that's just a step we may have to take. We'll, every month we'll look very carefully at where we are, that we're able to fund the district for the month and then be able to make those decisions. That is my report. Do you have any questions for me? There's a lot of stuff.
I got one. Uh, for being the finance person, so this is now two years in a row that Cook County has extended the timeframe that we normally would start receiving monies from them. Is it something that is just two off years and then we'll go back to the cycle, or is this how it's going to be? So we need to get our ducks in a row.
Yeah, that's really an interesting question. Some, uh, some people are looking at it as it's something that they're gonna continue to do. We don't know for sure. The, the biggest concern is if they move the payments to January, not when people start paying, are they gonna then pay it down two months later? Or are they gonna then move back and end out?
Right.
So we don't, we don't know the answer to that yet. It's not something that has happened in the past and they've done for a couple of sessions and then changed. This is an open response, so. So I, I don't think I can give you an answer. We can ask Dr. Schilling next week if he could forecast that better for us, but um, right now, we are concerned with the 60 days in between uh, January and like March.
Right. And I, I would agree that I don't think it'll be 60 days. I think that's second payment that also needs to be spent, because people can't react, especially when we're in a triennial, triennial ground. So.
There, yes.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
So maybe just unusual, and I think all of Chicago is getting reassessed this year, which I think is what's taking a little longer too.
And then my other, only other comment is, again, from a finance perspective, I love free money, so congrats and keep up the good work. You're gonna need free money for us.
Free money is free.
I have a question about that. As, as these grants started, I mean, that kinda way it seems like some have come through, did we find that the more grants you apply for, the more you know the language of writing to apply for the grant, the better you get at it, or is each one very, very neat?
That's a great question. Um, the way that they phrase it is when you have a good narrative, then it's easier to apply for, and once you're kind of in that cycle, it's easier to keep adding on to them. So we have a good narrative. Both of these grants were basically using that same narrative of, of our district and what we have um, moving forward in our district. So you kinda, it does seem like once you get into that, that world, we keep going.
So you're saying we've gotten better at articulating how neat we are?
I'm not sure, um, there's two things.
Wow.
One thing is the grants were dollars available. These are new grants that are available. Um, and the second thing is um, it's not that we haven't written that before and we haven't received them. So it's kinda the first time getting out there. I think the preschool one will be even interesting too, because the preschool one is, is for infrastructure, for building program, which is something we've been talking about uh, for a couple of years. So if, if we can fund um, our preschool renovation through a grant, that would be great. And currently, right now, it does not look like we received last year the threshold for a single audit, um, but we do, if we need a single audit, we, we can, because as you hit a threshold of $750,000 in grants in a given year, then, then you do require to have a single audit. It does not look like we'll hit that this year, or sorry, the 21, 22 school year, probably in 22, 23. With the addition of ESSER. Any other questions?
Special ed report, Mr. Gess.
So in the, uh, few weeks that I've been uh, here, I've actually been able to introduce myself both in person and then digitally to remember our special education staff. Um, I actually was able to reach out and actually ask the same question that was asked me about a couple of days in, of Y Norridge. Um, I'm happy to say that it was, we had a very similar message. It's very familial, very community-based, and I really appreciate that. Um, I'm very honored to be welcomed into such a community, um, so I'm very, I'm very excited to see how, you know, moving forward, how our staff continues to interact with students and, and makes me feel very welcome and very excited for that. Um, I have been able to reach out to a couple of contacts through S40, through some of our, our partnerships with the PBIS collaboration, which I know Dr. Rebiola will be talking about later. Um, in addition, I have been able to also uh, tour some of our alternative special education facilities, uh, the first being uh, Lori Day School in Arlington Heights, uh, the second being at the Winston Knoll School in Hoffman Estates presently. Um, during my visit, I was able to determine that from the director that there is a new location that might lead to Elgin, so I'm looking to potentially get out there and see that new location, see some of the new uh, offerings and supports typically um, offered to our students. In addition, I was, while I was there, I was able to observe a student from our community who is presently attending that school, see some of the supports, and very excited to continue our partnership with them. Uh, lastly, uh, we were able to, as an administrative staff, meet with a number of candidates to fill some open vacancies for the upcoming school year. We've made a lot of great progress in identifying talented candidates and also making some recommendations to either hopefully come to the Board and advise, uh, go to the next round of interviews. So I'm very excited to continue my work here and I'm looking forward to the upcoming school year. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Principals Report, Dr. Rebiola, Mr. Gack.
All right, so I, as uh, Mrs. Kuzik mentioned, the building preparations are underway. Some of the asbestos work, which was completed um, last week, and the lunchroom ceiling just started to look, you know, really nice down uh, you know, in the cafeteria there, having a little bit of extra space. And uh, as you may have seen coming into the building, a lot of the classrooms are uh, clearing out right now for the deep clean, which is, which is really great that uh, this elegant index, it looks like we're gonna be on, on track for that uh, to be completed in that early August timeframe that we're, that we're looking for, so that's great. Well, we've been making a lot of preparations for the upcoming school year and uh, have been completing some interviews, working on uh, bringing some recommendations to the Board, uh, for a variety of positions. We still have a few openings that we're looking to uh, to staff. Um, and, and have really been collaborating as an administrative team, um, to make sure that we have a uh, a release letter that made for uh, the upcoming school year, and we're excited about that. On July 8th, we had a uh, a meeting with the uh, what we're calling the District Community Leadership Team for the uh, as part of the PBIS grant, um, so that would bring together the different uh, organizations that we're working with, um, through that grant, and we had a great initial planning meeting, um, and we're really looking forward to diving into that work a little bit deeper. That concludes my report.
And over at Giles, uh, you know, Mrs. Kuzik talked about the projects, I just would like to, you know, go ahead and with the rest of the administrative team, and really thank our maintenance department, uh, Pat Rossi, Derek, uh, Mike and Tony and Dylan, they're doing an outstanding job. What I really appreciate is the pride that they take in their work. They, it really is coming out. You are all gonna be really impressed with the work that they, that they're doing at our, at our library and in the main office, and I'm, I'm excited about the hallways that are gonna be painted, and it'll be a great new, new fresh start for our students when they enter that building, so thanking to them. Uh, so would like to acknowledge sitting ride for the deep cleaning, they're doing a wonderful job, going into each room and from top to bottom, everything's coming up, everything's being deep cleaned, so the building is gonna be really, really clean when everyone comes back. Uh, we are currently working on our student schedules, they're almost finalized, uh, majority of them. We are looking into a mailing home this year. This will be the first time that we've done that with our student schedules for fifth through eighth grade. Our goal is to make sure that when parents come on that first day, uh, supply drop-off, uh, that they're able to already have their schedule, that they can go and follow, you know, go to each other's classrooms, get a feel of where they need to go and the order that they need to go. In addition to that mailing, we're also looking to send homes some important information that parents will need to know, such as student like conferences, just to get them starting to think about that and schedule that, um, so they have an idea about when that's all gonna take place. So we're looking at a mailing to go around August 8th, that week. Uh, the public calendar of the North School District 80 website has been updated with all the current events that we are, that we have in place, uh, especially the athletic events, so that, those are all posted on that uh, that public calendar. The administrative team is working on new teacher orientation and teacher institute days, so we're, we're working very hard to get our teachers uh, on-boarded and get them going, so that they have all the tools and the resources, so that they can do their job uh, come school time. Uh, and then finally here at Giles, we are still looking for two positions, we're looking for a Giles nurse, and we're looking for a speech-language pathologist, so those are two open positions currently that we're uh, we're looking to still interview for. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, guys. I'm being told that there's no report on discipline this morning, okay? Thank you. And then so a little two monthly staff members.
As Mr. Gack you mentioned, we do have a couple of positions still open. I think the main thing that I wanna highlight, um, is we are still looking for a number of current professionals. Um, so if we get that word out, we'll continue to get our word out as well. Um, we are looking for people who have a certified care professional license through the state of Illinois and a couple of positions that we have still to fill. And that we're moving along, and we're very pleased with the candidates that we have been very interested in.
Thank you. Moving on to Board Committees. For policy development, you'll see under 14B, our agenda item, we're gonna sign, we'll be going on that tonight. Phil D. Ross.
Uh, I don't have anything that hasn't already been talked about, so you know, summer projects, uh, plan. That's it? Thank you, Frank.
Communications?
No.
Finance?
Um, we're gonna have, as Mrs. Kuzik had mentioned, we'll be bringing a preliminary budget to next meeting, uh, next board meeting. We're gonna have trying to uh, finance subcommittee earlier in August, before then, so that we're all on-boarded. That's pretty much it. And free money, great things.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, negotiations. The negotiation, again, we're in the negotiating year, the contract year. We met six times since April 11th, um, scheduled to meet again early in August, or seventh meeting, so it's ongoing. Education, parent, teacher advisory, behavioral, those are as needed. I'm not aware of anybody meeting on those, so there'll be nothing to report, North Park District. Either rep here tonight, Joe, you have anything for us?
We have a meeting Thursday evening, North Park District.
Thursday, it's 21st.
21st, correct?
All right, thank you. Moving on to Consent Agenda. I ask the Board to consider the approval. I'll put consent in there. Any discussion on that? Yeah, I ask for motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
So Molly, Frank, roll call please, sir.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes. Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Zanah?
Yes.
Mrs. Laun?
Yes.
Mr. Blazin?
Yes. Curious. Action next. I ask the Board to consider the approval of transportation contract with Conway Bus Company for after-school activities, any discussion? I'll then ask for motion to approve the transportation contract with Conway Bus Company for after-school activities.
Sir.
Maria, Molly, roll call.
Mrs. Laun?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Blazin?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Zanah?
Yes. Curious. I ask the Board to consider the approval of the contract for national investigations, discussion.
So real quick, uh, does this company, have they done business with any district referral, hopefully?
Yes, human range. A couple other right in the air.
Your mention.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, they um, met with them several times, um, seems like they're exactly, pretty reasonable, $65 an hour. They charge on the half hour, so even if there's someone pretending that they have to bill charge for half an hour. And that includes transportation or mileage, includes everything. Their, their strongest point is they run everything through database, and they feel that that database is really the key. Um, even to the point that if we continue to work with them for several years, we may be able to um, not, maybe everyone doesn't have to complete all, turn in all those forms over here, if they can get that good at being able to predict, project things. They also feel they're gonna find 7% to 15% of our law district in their first quarter.
Where's our percent?
They predict 7% to 15% based on what they have worked on in the past, not based on looking at anything about us, but just what they've worked with in the past.
When will we be sending them on first list?
They send them our list, they wire everything through, then we sit down with them and decide if they're okay.
I ask for motion to approve the contract for national investigations.
Motion.
The tie. Well, Molly, Molly, then roll call.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Laun?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Rest.
Mr. Zanah?
Yes.
Mrs. Laun?
Yes. Onto our discussion items. Per assessment?
Yes, thank you. Last month in my report, I mentioned to you that we were gathering together the threat assessment team for the district. Uh, just wanted to share with you today, see if you have any questions about the uh, team. We have already had a lot of work done, looking We have already had a lot of work done, looking at some of our procedures and our recommendations, and such as student threats, threats to self, threats to others. We looked at all of our suicide risk assessment forms. We, we updated our, we've updated our DCFS district-wide systems and protocols, our home visit protocols, our police protocols, our insert report protocols. We've updated all of them. And we're now starting our next step where we're bringing in our community resources. So I have reached out to Howard Heights and Chief DeBries is very interested in joining us. So we will have Norwich and Howard Heights Police Departments, our Fire Department, and then our community members that we've reached out to that will join us for our safety conversations. At that time, we'll also plan all of our safety drills for the 2023 school year. I think we are, one of the things we want to really look deeper at, our lockdown drills, that procedure, if, just updating staff on and when there are substitutes in the building on lockdowns. I think that's an area I broke for us, something we need to work on, so we have recognized that. And then in August, I want us to bring you our comprehensive threat and safety plan for the district. Director. Any questions about that assessment team? This is a yearly process then, what we're looking at every year, looking at our data, our students, and then where we can grow. It's not a fun area, but it's a very critical, important area for us. Any questions on that? And move on to the consolidated district plan. Every year, the Illinois State Board of Education requires us to submit a consolidated district plan. This plan is only for the grants that we have in the district. Please understand this is not consolidating our district with another district. This is something I bring to, will bring to you every year. What it is, is we have to write out all of the grants that we receive, how they will all work in conjunction, and what our goals are for the, for the year. That has to be board approved, so I'd like to bring that to you in August. That, if you recall last year, is just basically the printout of the areas of focus for each of the grants. Includes the special education grant, all of the title grants, which we receive Title I, Title II, Title IV, the young grant, which is Title III, SR1, SR2, and 3, which we still are working on, SR2. We have started a little bit of SR3, our community partnership grant, and now our new after-school care grant. So we'll bring that to you next month. Any questions about that? Great. 16C is our, we have to start the year with, are looking at COVID mitigation for this year. As you recall, in February, we made our changes with COVID, where masking became optional within, in the district. I am, of course, going to make any changes to how we left the school year in June to how we start the school year in August. I can review those with you. Masking will continue to be optional in the district. If there is a positive COVID-19 diagnosis, we will follow the CDC guidelines, which means that if a student is home for five days after the first day of symptoms, and then return has to be masked for five days after that. Student has to be fever-free, medication, you know, form medication and such. Asymmetrical siblings of a positive case may continue to come to school, as well as people who are exposed to a person with COVID-19. A student can be sent home from school if he or she exhibited COVID-19 symptoms. We're kind of going back to before the COVID started on our, when a student can come back to school. So yes, one of the options is a negative COVID test, but that is not the only option. A student can receive a note from a doctor. For probably the one that we see the most, the student can return after being fever-free without fever-reducing medication for 24 hours, not with diarrhea and vomiting for 4 hours. That was what we followed back before March of 2022. So that is, that's why where our students come back the most. So it is not that you must have a COVID test. If a family wants a COVID or COVID test, it certainly is acceptable. They still will have, the student will still be fever-free for 4 hours. Masking is optional on buses for after-school events. There's no assuming that is mandatory in sports events or anywhere after-school events. We will not be live streaming COVID-positive students, but we'll send work home. And if a student is, is well enough to complete the work, then they can complete the work. And we'll just continue to move forward with paying attention to our local metrics and our directives from the CCBPH or the IPH. We can put this up to our families as well. Next month, we will have that as an action.
The store-bought COVID test kit results. That was brought in, that's just as a review.
Correct. Yes, we were certain. And I leave that in the connection.
Questions? Okay, Michelle, thank you. Board comments. I'll make a couple of comments. Sarah, I know it's none of your style, but I'm kind of now. It's bittersweet for me, as I'm sure it is for other people. Last week, the board was informed that our district secretary, administrative assistant, Sarah Bosick, is retired after 18 years. So, again, bittersweet, probably taken a minute, and just thank you, from me to you, being on the board over three years, you've made my job a lot easier. From the moment we got on the board, the phone calls you returned to me, the pre-agenda meetings, the notes you prepared for me, the cups of coffee you made for me sometimes in the morning, I will forever be grateful to you. So again, it's bittersweet. After 18 years, you deserve to do what you want to do with your life, and I wish you nothing but happiness, and I want you to know that I really appreciate what you did for me and for the board members when we got it. So thank you very much, and everything you did for this district. Thanks, okay? So please, when we break for a closed session, I know we have some ice cream cake and we have some things for you to say. It's not Sarah's style, but we're going to do anything. Thank you. So please join us, okay? And Sarah, thank you very much, I appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Everybody else have a minute? Okay. All right, I'd ask the board to consider a motion to adjourn into closed session to discuss the employment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissable specific employees. Collective bargaining matters, interview in closed session minutes. Any discussion? I'd ask for motion to adjourn in closed session to discuss the employment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissable specific employees. Collective bargaining matters, interview in closed session minutes. Motion.
Second.
Frank, Maria, per call, sir.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law? Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. We'll be the closed session when we get to closed session. All right, we're back in open session. I went to the, we've got the personnel action items. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Anna Osawka. By legal Polish teacher, lead one step two. Any discussion? I'll ask for motion to approve the employment of Anna Osawka, by legal Polish teacher, and lead one step two.
Motion.
Molly, Maria, per call, sir.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Sydney Shutu. So he's Shutu, fifth grade head teacher at a school, lead one step one. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to approve the appointment of Sydney Shutu, fifth grade head teacher at a school, step one.
Thank you.
Frank Lou, per call, sir.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Misses Beck?
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Frank Mikowski, building and ground summer work. Discussion. I'll ask for the motion to approve the employment of Frank Mikowski, building and ground summer work.
Second.
Frank, Molly, per call.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Naj Salay, building and ground summer work. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to approve the employment of Naj Salay, building and ground summer work.
Motion.
Frank Maria, per call.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Carries. Consider the approval of the employment of Rachel Graham, social worker in the school, lead three, step 10. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to approve the employment of Rachel Graham, social worker in the school, lead three, step 10.
Motion.
Frank Maria, per call, sir.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Allison Cornell, assistant principal of the school. Discussion. I am asking for motion to approve the employment of Allison Cornell, assistant principal of the school.
Motion.
Frank Lou, per call, sir.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Christine Dahl, district peer professional. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to approve the employment of Christine Dahl as district peer professional.
Motion. Second.
Frank Maria, per call, sir.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yep.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Jasmine Wilson, district special and peer professional. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to approve the employment of Jasmine Wilson, district special and peer professional.
Motion. Second.
Frank and Molly, per call.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval of the employment of Tanya Santana as district special and peer professional. Discussion. I'll ask for a motion to approve the employment of Tanya Santana, district special and peer professional.
Motion.
Frank Maria, per call.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries. I'd ask the board to consider the acceptance of the letter of retirement from Sarah Bosick, administrative assistant to the Board of Education and Superintendent. Discussion. I'll ask for motion to accept the letter of retirement from Sarah Bosick, administrative assistant to the Board of Education and to the Superintendent.
No.
No.
Yeah, I was just about to say no. They all said no.
Yes, sir.
Can't go. No, you can't go.
Sorry. I'm motionably grudgingly.
Second. Molly, unfortunately.
Yes, yeah, can't wait to hear.
Per call, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Motion.
Mr. Tchubieza?
Yes.
Mrs. Law? I don't know, but okay. Mr. Razan?
No.
Mr. Razan?
Yes.
I, the motion carries.